Good evening. The September 26th, 2022 Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, September 26th, 2022 Board of Education meeting/work session be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Merschbach. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye. Next is the superintendent's report. She's joining us via Google Meet. Superintendent Bush, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Can I hear her?
You want to go to board reports while we're over?
This is a second. We can go to board reports if any, if there's any board reports.
We got me?
Director Borchardine?
Okay.
We'll go back to Plan A.
Hi, everybody.
Superintendent Bush, floor is yours.
Sorry about that. Glad we could dial in. Are we all ready? Justin? Herb. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's board meeting, and so glad that I can be with you virtually tonight. Few announcements and things certainly that you've been seeing in the news and on our social media, but lots of things to celebrate and bring to our community's attention. One of those first things is City View, which was unveiled at our last board meeting as our magnet high school that's on the radar to open next fall of '23. And right now, there are parent and student sessions to learn more about City View. We had a couple sessions last week, and then again, there's a session tonight at 6:30 at the public library. But there's also a lot more information on our website about the fall of '23 enrollment. Excited about that opportunity for our students, and a thank you, everyone, for engaging in that possibility and asking lots of great questions. So, and thank you to Principal DeVore, who has been gracious with his time to answer questions from the community. And so you will see contact information if you go to our website to find out more information about City View. Secondly, a quick update on our Facility Master Plan Community Open Houses. We had our second virtual session last Thursday night. The recording of that session, as well as the first session, are both posted on our website, on our Facility Master Plan landing page for our district. With those recordings is also an electronic survey. We really encourage folks, if you are not able to attend one of the live or virtual sessions, that the virtual sessions are another way in which you can gather that information. They're virtual, they're recorded, anytime, anyplace learning, and then you can certainly give us your written feedback, which is really how we've been collecting feedback from everyone. And then if you have additional things or thoughts, we welcome your emails and ways in which to contact us so that we can gather as much information as possible for the upcoming board work session in October. This coming week, we have two community leader coffees, thanks to Director of Operations, John Galbraith, who's leading those sessions to see from an economic development point of view, as well as our business and nonprofit leadership points of view, questions that they specifically have about our Facility Master Plan. We also have some Neighborhood Association meetings that we're attending. And then again, our landing page on our website is a fantastic resource, full of an FAQ as those questions are coming in to provide our community more clarity and support as they understand these concepts that we presented to the board last month. So just thank you so much for everyone for attending those community open houses, and thank you for your time, even if it's anytime, anywhere learning from a virtual session recorded just for you to sit at home and watch at your leisure to give us feedback. We welcome that. And then lastly, celebrations. Speaking of new buildings, our newest elementary, prior to West Willow opening last fall, was Viola Gibson. And believe it or not, they just celebrated 20 years. You can see a couple of our retiree teachers, as well as a picture of Viola Gibson. Just the kids and the teachers spent a day with the community, really celebrating what it means to be at Viola Gibson Elementary and to walk in the themes of Viola Gibson's footsteps. You can see the screen, I know it's very faint, but the quote on the board is, "I never did anything for recognition. I just did things because they needed doing," from Viola Gibson. So thank you, students, adults, for celebrating that 20-year anniversary of Viola Gibson. And it's amazing how quickly the time goes, but we were so happy they were able to celebrate that 20-year anniversary. And with that, I'll conclude superintendent's report.
Great, thanks for those updates and thanks for the report. Director Borchardine, I saw you signal you have a report.
I do have a report, and it's just an update. So I just wanted to let the board members, though, know that November 16th through 18th is the IASB Convention and Trade Show. And if you haven't registered yet, please do contact Board Secretary Laurel Day. And the other thing is that through a special delegate assembly, voting delegates for IASB voted to make an amendment to the bylaws. It passed with 94%, and it basically turned language that said that we shall be member of National School Board Associations to allowing the Board of Directors to determine what method would best advance the goals through a national organization. That's it. I have more information if anybody wants that.
Great, thank you for that report. Are there any other reports? Next, we will hear from those who have requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we have three individuals who have asked to address the board this evening.
Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. With three speakers, you will each be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language in outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Laurel, can you please call our first speaker?
Our first speaker this evening is Julie Casey. Julie is here from Marion, Iowa, and she's here to talk about movies.
Hi, first of all, I just wanted to say to the superintendent, really sorry to her that she's sick. We differ, but I don't, you know, I don't wish cancer on her because I went through that and I know how hard it is. So I just wanted to let her know, I don't know if she can hear. This is about a Watchmen movie that was last year. I didn't have time to address the board with. It was really disappointing to see the board approve it, just like they're approving right now the National School Board Association that's going after parents and using the FBI to do it, which is really upsetting because that's a national story, and it's been going on through Congress. So this movie that was showed had two explicit sex scenes, and it had nudity. The main character was nude throughout the movie. It showed a hatchet cutting a skull in half, three times, blood and gore dripping from the ceiling with entrails, blood everywhere, violence from start to finish. It had arms sawed off, and it went on from there. It was so bad. I had a really, it was hard to watch. This is approved for our children every year in our perspectives, in each high school perspective class. I think we can do better. You know, China children are learning calculus in third grade. We're not. We're ranked near bottom for education. Also coming to a school near you is a 1619 Project, where they teach a revised and new history and the Second Steps Project, which parents do need to know these new programs that are being approved by your school boards. This all comes through us or funding. You grease the palms and you can do anything. You can do anything through the school system with enough money. And that's where it's coming, is through us or we were following the money. Anyone can file a formal complaint for unlawful or bad behavior, rape or assault, sexually explicit pictures, movies, or talk against any school board member, teacher, principal, superintendent with USCourts.gov, and they click on the formal complaints. It can be used in all courts, and a judge is required by law to investigate. We're going to start having to see some maybe things happening to children, especially with Lin Mar, when they're allowing boys to go in the girls' bathrooms. Now, I am not against transgenders. I am against transgendering our children because they're innocent, and all countries around the world are banning it for our children. I'm MEAT trained. We were trained that after transition, the number one suicide was transgenders. Number one suicide was transgender children. So we were told what the side effects might be. Hormone disbalances, mental problems. It causes a mental disability, bone health problems, hormones, and cancer are some of the things, the reason the other countries are banning this program for our children. I have no problem with transgenders once they're of age. I want kids to remain innocent, untouched, and left alone. So the top spokesperson that travels across the U.S. for the transgender movement was arrested for pedophilia recently. So we've got a problem. We've got to leave our kids alone, and I think we can do better. And I think our school board can do better. I think we can leave our kids innocent, let them choose what they want to do when they become of age, and not let Big Pharma make tons of money. I mean, we were catching undercover Pharma agents talking about the fact that they're for life. They can make money on this for life with all the problems that transgender side effects have. It's a big moneymaker. And as parents, I'm a mama bear. I will fight for any child and every child, not just my own. Social emotional learning questions from your kids goes to the FBI. I think parents need to know that, that the FBI is gathering these questions. And that was actually through Congress that I found that out. Congress. So if the FBI is gathering up these questionnaires, what are they using them for? Why do they need to know what our kids are asked for social emotional learning? And why would they be able to use them later on? These are children. So that was a kind of a real bad concern I had. Again, we're behind in school. We're behind in any other country, and they're protecting the children. Why is Europe banning this movement, this transgender movement? They're letting kids be kids, and then when they want to transition at a certain age, they'll allow them, but they're not letting any of this go through the children. They're also banning shots, vaccines, which are mRNA gene therapy. Why aren't we? I think we can do better, and I do pray that you guys will do better. We need to protect children, let them be innocent. I remember my childhood, very innocent. None of this needed to be taught. It was math and reading. Let's go back to that, okay? Thank you.
Clarifying question. Is the movie you referenced, was that Watchmen?
The Watchmen movie.
The Watchmen movie. So you referenced the main character who was nude throughout the movie. Is that Dr. Manhattan, the big blue guy?
With his things sticking out.
The one who was.
The whole time.
Exploded in a nuclear accident and reassembled himself.
Yeah, it's a 1969 movie. No, I can't remember the year the movie was, but it's a 2009 movie, and it is in all perspectives classes. And I actually called the educator for Iowa, and he blamed the school board, the Iowa School Board for it. So everybody's passing blame and who's doing the movie.
Question's been answered, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Erin Beaver. Erin is here to speak about the Iowa Educational Transparency Act of 2022.
Do I have to wait for anybody, or you start?
Go right ahead.
The following information pertains to the Iowa Educational Transparency Act of 2022, which mandates public access to complete educational lesson plans, educational materials, and school library books. I will be reading 11 questions that together comprise over 50% of the report cards for children in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. All Cedar Rapids parents can find the following information on Infinite Campus by going to the Parent Portal and selecting Your Child's Grades tab. While listening to the following 11 questions, please ask yourself, what exactly is my child being taught in school? And why do these questions carry more weight on my child's report card than math, reading, and science combined? Question number one that's on your child's report card is: Connecting: Relate artistic ideas and works with societal and cultural text. Two: Social awareness. The ability to take the perspective of and empathize with others, including those from diverse backgrounds and cultures. Three: Relationship skills. The ability to establish and maintain healthy and rewarding relationships with diverse individuals and groups. Four: Responsible decision making. The ability to make constructive choices about personal behavior and social interactions based on ethical standards and social norms. Five: Explain choices and consequences of using natural resources to meet human wants and needs. Six: Explain how the choices people make impact local and distant environments. Seven: Given a set of perspectives, use evidence to articulate why one reason is more likely than others to explain a historical event. Eight: Develop a reasonable idea about who created the primary and secondary source, when they created it, where they created it, and more importantly, why they created it. Nine: What are the reasons for immigration and migration? Ten: Develop a claim about the past based on evidence from a credible source. Eleven: Act on local, regional, and global civics problems. Now that I read off the report card questions, I have a few questions of my own. What social engineering goal is Cedar Rapids Community School District trying to impose on my child? Do teachers agree with these report card questions, or are they being forced to fill in the blanks? In conclusion, the Iowa Educational Transparency Act of 2022 mandates that Iowa schools publish their lessons and educational materials online for parents and the general public to review. Publication of educational content goes a long way towards alleviating the educational concerns of Iowa parents such as myself and provides the necessary oversight to ensure a balanced education within the public school system. For more information on the Iowa Educational Transparency Act, please contact Kim Reynolds' office, 515-281-5211, and talk to a member of her staff. They're doing their best, and we'd love to hear from you. Thanks.
Our last speaker this evening is Mary McHenry, and Mary is here representing the Cedar Rapids Education of Office Professional Associates, and she is here to speak about wages and continuing education.
Hi, Mary McHenry. I live at 2615 Buchanan Drive Southeast, representing the secretaries. And I would love to thank you for including us in the retention bonus. That is a nice surprise for all of us. Comes at a great time, may help pay off some bills for some of our secretaries. I plan to use mine to start a 529 for my new grandson, so I'm very excited to get that. I have enjoyed working with Linda. We have been working on some continuing education to get an education bump for secretaries, both things that are job-related, like Google Classroom and all of the programs that we're using, but also some of the things that are offered to teachers that, you know, equity and inclusion, working with students in poverty, which we're the first face often that a lot of these kids see. And so it's good for us to know these things as well. So those are some great positives. I saw a tweet, I'd have to come with some numbers, too, though. I saw a tweet that a child born in 2015, it cost $233,610 to raise them to 18. Well, they used 17. So that equates to $13,741.76 a year. Now, the average family has 2.5 kids. So we take and we do the 2.5 kids. That is $34,340.90 just to raise those 2.5 kids. And that does not even include anything for the adults in the family or any emergencies. And if we went back to our building secretary salary, they're about $35,000 a year. So just to get the kids raised, our 2.5 kids, we're almost maxing out if you're a single parent. So thank you for all of the work that we have been collaborating on, and have a great night.
Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
President Tominski, I would like to pull BA 23-125, just for a comment.
125 is not on the consent agenda.
That's on administration.
Oh, sorry. Whoops.
No worries. Any other items? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Roundtree. Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye. Next up on, next up is an update on the Cedar Rapids Community School Foundation. I will turn the meeting over to Laurel for some introductions.
Thank you. The School Foundation is pleased to be here this evening to provide their annual report. Here representing the foundation is Dr. Chris Tyler, who is the current president, along with Kirsten Pardubsky, who is current chair-elect, and Executive Director Karen Swanson. So if you want to make your way to the podium, we would love to hear what you have to share with us this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity, board, for having us here tonight to provide an update, annual update on our programming. It, the board, the update for this year is on the website. You can find it there. I'm sharing some highlights with you. We gifted nearly $360,000 to district programs out of a budget of $529,000 this year. So over three-quarters of our budget goes to district programming. Despite the, despite the investment community being a little bit against us, we still had our asset base grow this year, thankfully, because of we have some amazing donors in the community and a mission that resonates very well with everyone. We are just shy of 1.5 million in total assets right now. We have added a part-time staff person to oversee alumni relations to hope for some more increased engagement with that community. Our senior scholarship program is growing. Our fiscal agent program is growing. We are engaging with HR to ensure professional development funding increases and to make sure that our hiring reflects the district student population. On the page four of our, of our update, I think is the most important and telling stat to share, that being that this is our 13th consecutive year of positive growth for our foundation. And as a president, I get to report that to you, but all the credit goes to the executive director standing behind me, Karen Swanson. She's been with us since 2001.
11.
2001, I mean, 2011, sorry. 2011. But she has led us very well through this, through the last few years, and all credit for every increase in this budget in this report that I'm sharing with you tonight goes to her. So happy to take any questions if you have any right now.
Appreciate the update, and absolutely appreciate your hard work, Karen, on everything. And I imagine when Chris says that it sounded like 2001, it's just the amount of accomplishments you probably squeezed into that 10-year period.
Thank you, that's exactly what.
Nice recovery for you, Chris, you owe me.
Appreciate that.
I'll turn it over to my fellow board members if they have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you. I think the work that you do is tremendous. It provides students with opportunities that maybe otherwise wouldn't have them. So that is a huge equity plus, and I greatly appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Newman?
So I know that we've seen the need for, for assistance for students. Have we seen that grow in the past couple years? And how did the pandemic affect that through things like the SAFE program? And did we see an increase in applications?
I can't, I can't, Karen can speak to the increase in applications, but I think if, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the pandemic brought a whole new set of problems to the table, and I'm sure I am, I would just guess that that, that need has only grown since, since March of 2020.
I guess I do want to comment. I heard you say that there was some additional staff that was added, so I'm sure that's, that's a welcome, welcome addition to the team to get some support for you. Because I know, I think I speak for all of us when, I appreciate these updates. I think sometimes we've had you just come up and speak during public comment, but to be able to get up and be able to engage and ask some questions, I think is fantastic. It can't be overstated how important, I think, the foundation is for this entire district. And I'm happy to hear that there's so many people in this community that see that clearly and support it as well. Is there, are there any glaring unmet needs? And so like when you look to, yeah, sorry. Sorry for opening that up, yeah. No, I mean, just. As you look to the coming year, what are some of the things that you think this community can continue to rally behind and further support the mission of the foundation?
Just wanted my executive director, because she's, she's the power and the brain behind this program. I'm just the conduit for. I'm just the conduit for the information here. Please.
I think the biggest disparity and the biggest equity issue that we're going to see is around extracurriculars, co-curricular and extracurriculars. It's going to be a huge, huge problem for all of our extracurriculars with the decisions that are made at the Iowa Department of Ed level in terms of what we can and cannot fundraise for, what we can and cannot allow to be charged as a fee for the Cedar Rapids Community School District, high schools especially, to compete at the level that all of us want them to, whether it's soccer, or marching band, or show choir, or DECA, or national speech and debate, to stay at that level, to have the facilities that are needed to be able to meet the fees that either are going to have to be required by the parents, required by the district to underwrite if that gets pulled away, to be required by fundraising, and whether that fundraising stays equitable with a student or across the base. That's where I'm seeing the biggest gap coming, and that's through our SAFE program. And that's something that we're probably going to have to be looking at fully endowing because it's, the gap is only going to get larger. And each year, the Iowa Department of Ed makes more restrictions on co-curricular and extracurricular activities and how those fees can and cannot be used. And it's placing more and more of a burden on the individual family. And so to have equity across the board so any student can participate in co-curricular, co- and extracurricular activities, we're going to have to up the budget in that bucket.
Great. Appreciate that answer. Yeah. Director Newman, sure.
So this one probably is going to Karen. What would it take to fully endow SAFE?
At this point in time, what we do is we tentatively assure a 5% growth. We currently have a $30,000 SAFE program budget. So if you were to fully endow that, you're going to need about $600,000 to ensure 30,000. But each year, we go over that and we just dip into general operating. I would love to see SAFE fully endowed at $50,000, which would be a million dollars. And then we could assure that $50,000 goes back out to those kids that want to participate in co- and extracurricular activities, but don't have the funds at home.
Thank you, and thank you to all that you and the board do.
No further questions? Thanks for the presentation. We'll move on to the annual request to the SBRC for special education. Do we have any questions for Carla? Director Borchardine?
I don't have a question.
I just have a comment. And that is that this occurs annually and has, for, I think, the inception of Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act. This is nothing new. Y'all have heard me say this from the school board before. When that law was passed, it was passed with the promise of a 60% funding. And it's only ever been funded between 12 and 13%. So this is not new. This is not just us. Every school district in the state of Iowa has a special education deficit.
Additional comments, questions for Carla? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Next is an amendment to the engagement letter with Piper Sandler &amp; Company for the school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds. Are there any questions for Carla or John? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next is the approval of an engagement letter with Dorsey &amp; Whitney LLP for the school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds with bond and disclosure counsel. Are there any questions for Carla or John? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Our final administration item is a resolution to schedule a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $30 million school infrastructure sale, services, and use tax revenue bonds in one or more series. Are there any questions for Carla or John? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Turn the meeting to you, Laurel, for a roll call.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman. Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Merschbach. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
President Timinski.
Aye. Get confused with that one sometimes. Sorry. Our work session tonight is focused on workforce recruitment and retention. I'll turn the meeting over to Linda, Arice, and Ryan.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about recruitment and retention. As I begin to have this conversation, I think it's really important to realize that this is a real team effort. Takes a lot of collaboration, and it takes all of us working together to really focus on these two areas. So they're not solely an HR function, but really a district function. And along with Arice and Ryan, I also have tonight David Jacobs and Haley Resware, who are experts in many of these areas and do a lot of this work. So when we get to the questions and answers, they may be able to help with some of that. So I'm going to start with going through some data with you, and then we're going to talk about some of the retention or sourcing channels, and then we're going to talk about some retention information. So as you all know, this comes from our strategic plan under the workforce section. And then the next slide here, this is a dashboard that we are starting to work on with Angela Billman, who we all know is the best, and really trying to get access to some quick data so that we can kind of keep track of information as we go forward versus always lagging. So this would help a little bit in that area. And some of the things that we're looking at is just how our headcount stacks up and whether or not that's changing over time. You can see here with the total headcount, we, about, our headcount, about 45% is made up of teachers, 17% are paras, and then all other staff make up about 38% of our staff. If you look at the column with the race, we have 90% white and 10% non-white. And we all recognize, you all recognize as well, that this is an area of opportunity for us and an area of growth and an area that we are constantly focused on. How do we increase the number of non-whites that we have within our district and ensure that we have people that look like our students? Although we have a long ways to go, I do want to do a little bit of a celebration. Since 2018, that number of 10% has grown by 4%. So some of our strategies have started to pay off a little bit in that area. From a resignation perspective, we've had 51 resignations so far this year, which is about 1.9% of our population. However, if we compare that to last year at the exact same time, we were running 5.6%. So we are starting, hopefully it stays on track, but we are starting to see a decline in that attrition from last year as well. And then you can see what our top five reasons for resignation are. Career change, leaving the profession, and opportunity at another district, and work-life balance, and then health and medical. The career change, leading the profession, and the opportunity for another district have really spiked out. And so that's where we're going to be doing some of our deep dive work as we start to work with the Teacher Association. And Arice and I have had many, many conversations about this. So that's where a lot of that work will come from. This next slide just shows a comparison of where we've been over the last four years. And you can see in those, before pandemic, we were running our, we were hiring more than we were attriting. So we could kind of stay ahead of the game here. When the pandemic hit, you can see that our hiring went way down. And we did that intentionally. We weren't hiring a lot during the pandemic for various reasons. We were online. We weren't all here. Lots of different reasons why that hiring went down. But what you can see is our attrition increased during that period of time as well. And so that's really when we started this decline of getting behind and having a real shortage in our workforce is right around that pandemic timeframe. And we haven't fully recovered from that as of yet. So this goes into a little bit more detail for you. What you can see here is from the teacher perspective, we had our highest number of hires right before the pandemic in 2019, 2020. But then you can see since that time, we've not recovered. So we've not hired as many people pre-pandemic as we have after pandemic. For the paras, we did recover nicely last year. So we had a huge number, huge spike in the para hiring for last year. I think that's really a lot contributed to the increase that we did for all of our paras. And so we were really able to capture a lot more people last year. Transportation is another group that has not recovered from the pandemic. And you can see that, or I guess it'll be the next slide, you'll see where their spike hit. So yeah, we can go ahead and go to the next slide. So the terms and resignations, or retirements, excuse me. You can see that last year, we had our highest number of teachers that resigned, and by quite a few. So we had a huge spike last year in regards to that. Same with our paras. We had more paras resign last year as well than we had the previous four years. From the transportation perspective, what you can see is we really lost all of our people during the pandemic. And again, we haven't recovered from that huge spike. Food nutrition is starting to rebound. Custodians and secretaries are staying pretty consistent there. Top three reasons, I already mentioned the top three reasons. Leaving the education and going to another district. You can see that huge spike with teachers in comparison to all of our other groups. And then health and medical being the third one here. So this is all last year's data, or the last four years' data. And what you saw on that first slide is right now, we're trending with work-life balance being the third reason versus health and medical. So we'll see how that kind of pans out. So the next couple of slides I'm going to talk about is just the recruitment and where we're at from a recruitment perspective. This is our recruitment cycle, so these are all of the things that we focus on from a recruitment perspective. I'm going to spend some time talking about the sourcing and some of the things that we've done around the sourcing aspect of this. So if you can move to the next slide. So what you can see from this slide is our sourcing channels. The employee referral and the district website continue to be our number one and number two referral source. So that's where we want to spend the majority of our energy. That's fantastic that 61% of our employees refer us, are referring other people to us. We always find that when we have a referral, that's very helpful because people get kind of the real idea of what the job is about. Some other areas that you're seeing is Indeed. Indeed is one of the number one job sites that people go to when looking for jobs, so that's 10%. Teach Iowa is a teacher one that is used very often. And then you can see what we're doing in our career fair and our university postings. Some of the ones that didn't quite pop that we had expected is some of the work that we're doing with Iowa Works and the signage. So we have gone to multiple job fairs. Iowa Works has consistent job fairs throughout the year. We go to each and every one of those for our support staff. And signage, we are hearing from, our transportation is the number one source for them. And so we just add that, had that added as one of our referrals. So we expect to see that increase as well. And then we just added applicant track, proactive recruiting, which you all approved, I think at the last board meeting. So we're starting to dabble in that. And then some of the partnerships that we work with, Top Rank, Blazer Works for outsourcing. And then we are exploring a site that focuses on diversity and posts the jobs in, I think, I don't remember exactly the number of sites, but there's a number of sites that they focus that are all focused on diversity. So. And then talking about some of the retention plans, a couple, you can see what we did here are the district-wide retention. These were the kind of the big rocks that we've focused on over the last few years. The increased wages has definitely helped retention. Payouts definitely help our employees, as we heard from Mary, if she's still here. Some of the SR funding that we have, the Grow Your Own Initiative. So we have the partnership with Dubuque as well as a para apprenticeship. Those are helping us a great deal. The foundation is, as Karen was talking about earlier, they are willing to help us in any way that they can from a diversity perspective. Our affinity groups, we have a couple of groups that we do sign-on bonuses for, and then the employee referral. And then, of course, the big one here to really dive into some of this retention piece is the Top Rank relationship that we have. And they're coming to do a cultural assessment, which I think is going to give us a lot of information as to how people think about the district today and possibly why they might be thinking about leaving or what's on their mind. And so I think that assessment is really going to give us a lot of rich data that's going to support these plans as well. And then with each of our work groups, we have different things that are going on with them. So our para educators were really focusing on the onboarding program, and we're focusing on professional learning opportunities. Our secretaries, as Mary talked about, the course approval process. We made some calendar changes that were more suitable for their scheduling. And then we made a huge PTO change that's really supportive of both our secretaries and our custodians, which is allowing them to have, they had a PTO that was in their rears. Now they get it up front, which is extremely helpful for them. And then from a teacher perspective, really focused on the resolution team, which Arice is going to talk about. And then the student-teacher conversions. So when we have student-teachers here, how many of those are we capturing? And then we also made a change with contracts this year that we had to have a suitable replacement before we allow people out of their contract. And that has helped tremendously slow down some of our attrition as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arice, who is going to talk about the resolution team and some of the things that we're doing in that arena.
Thank you, Linda. And I think, I actually want to take a step back because although we're going to talk about the resolution team, part of what we're talking about in retention actually has to do with our culture. And the fact that we took a step back two years ago and actually created the Equity Coach positions, that recognition of our culture has more to do with retention than anything else. And so the affinity group work, again, is a piece of that work as well. So recognizing that some of the culture and recognizing our need to address our culture helps with retention. So these other pieces actually come together. So I'll just switch back now, thank you, Justin, onto the slide that I'm looking at. So for most of you, you probably have heard over the years that we've had something called a resolution team. And it fit our needs at that time. And as we've had new people roll in, whether they were new administrators or new teachers, our structure and our culture as a whole needed a new outlook on how we're doing our work. And so at bargaining, we decided that we really wanted to step back and go, hey, money is great, because, don't get me wrong, we want money. But we needed to talk about, that's not enough to keep people in our system. So we wanted, and bargained only around this whole concept of retention. And so the idea was to come back to the table and revisit how our structure sits and to start from the beginning. So a lot of my colleagues who've been here as long as I have, we know that there was a whole transparent structure where we got the notes. And we knew that they met regularly, and there was a true process. It wasn't always about grievance, but we've had too much changeover to just pick up and start. And so what you see on the screen are the materials that we're using for our training. Because again, doing something well, you have to have that understanding of what it looks like. So what we're really looking to design is a strong labor management team. And so the, on the right is the cover of the material that we have from NEA that we're using as our guide. And as you can see, my book is all marked up as we go through it. There are 11 chapters, and we've only started. So we're really at the beginning of this work. I don't want to mislead anybody that we're off and running because, as you know, training takes time. We have to find time in our schedule. And our original design was to meet twice a month, and so far, we've been able to meet that. We're still, again, calories you're chasing, as I'm sure you all recognize. And so I wanted to show a couple of tools that we've used in the last couple of meetings. So this tool here actually came from our chapter where we're looking at how to make shared decisions. And it's really hard because we have ideas and you have ideas. And so we sat down and we walked through this tool here, making a decision about, after we brainstormed some things, how do you prioritize them and what will get us the most bang for our buck? And we spent probably, probably more than 30, 40 minutes on it, just generating that, not even looking at what we agreed upon to talk about from the TA. And so we're really being authentic about digging in and making and taking the time to do this right. The sheet in the middle actually looked at collective decision-making because there's a middle actually looked at collective decision-making, because there's a conception out there that we understand what that looks like. So we talked about those numbers here on the screen, and that, when do we make a decision? Where does it fall along the scale? The four in the middle, of course, is where it's truly shared. Both sides come together. And then once a decision is made, we all can speak to it, and we can move forward. But we had to have some real honest conversations about, sometimes those decisions are four, five, and six, and seven, where actually a decision's been made, and then we're consulted. And so our task, and it's a joint task, is to get together and really define what this team is and its purpose. And so our first couple of meetings have just been four people, two from the district, and myself and Kim Miller, because we needed to have a core structure before we invite others in. Once we're, once we're feeling a little bit more set, because we have a couple of modules and some things we need to do for more learning, we're going to then talk about how we branch this out. And that is our next meeting, actually, tomorrow, if I think about it, where we're looking at, again, how do we make up our collaborative teams, and what does that look like, sound like? And so we are really at the beginning of this work. And again, our ultimate goal is to build a strong labor management team. Because again, as we see from our data, you can't do this alone. And if we don't work and figure out what it means to be collaborative, that data you see for teachers will just continue. And so we have to address our culture. We have to be honest about what's not working. And we have to realize there are a lot more decision-makers at the table. And you don't have to have a title and work in this building to be able to do that work.
Good evening. And thank you for the opportunity to talk about new teacher support and onboarding within the district. So I'm here as a speaking head, but there's many people behind the scenes that are doing the work, and to get all of our new teachers, not just beginning teachers, but new teachers to the district, their support that they need to transition. So you can read the purpose of our team when we are looking to retain our teachers after that first year, and their levels of support. Something we'd like to highlight is that New Teacher Pre-Service Week. That's a week in which teachers, all of our new teachers come, they learn about our district's mission, vision, they also learn about curriculum resources, as well as get time in their building. It is a lot of information. So we're always seeking feedback on how can we simplify it. But yet, these are complex tasks that we're asking new teachers to do. And so it's that, striking that nice balance. Another thing that we have really put a lot of time into for our beginning teachers is mentoring and induction. You have noticed those come across the consent. All new teachers, first and second year, get an induction coach from Grant Wood AEA. And then this year, one of our big tasks with our strategic plan is level, HRS level 2.4, which is teacher evaluation and coaching. So you see that bullet point of principal and new teacher partnership and feedback, really honing in on what effectively feedback looks like from the principal, so that it becomes a partnership of growth and opportunity and development versus just an evaluation. You can look at some of the new teacher mentoring and induction data we have here. This is coming from Grant Wood AEA through Kim Owen, who runs that program. I'll give you a chance to read the quote from a metro teacher. And since our time with Grant Wood AEA and the consortium, it's been about four years, five years, I believe. And we've had a 34% increase in retention. And so we've gone above the state average. And you can dive deeper into that data on the next slide with, we have our CRCSD data that's linked there. And that can show you the retention data of three to five years from beginning teachers, as well as their growth. And then a little bit more information about the consortium, and their infographic for them that you can dive into and ask any questions if you'd like. Because we do put a lot of money, and a lot of effort, and a lot of time to supporting, especially the beginning teachers, so that we can retain them within the profession and within the district. Thank you.
And now we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Appreciate the presentation, the updates. I'll defer to my fellow board members. Director Humble.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. That, it was very helpful. When I go back to the HR dashboard, and it shows how many folks that we have working in the district. And I, one of the things we have been working on is diversifying the workforce. And you said, yes, you stated that it was at 10%. It was 4% growth. How many, what's the numbers for that? Give me a number for when it says 4%. How many more folks did we hire?
Oh, I'm not a math whiz. I'd have to do a calc, I'm sorry, I'm not a, I'm not a, so 4%, we were at 6%. So 4% more. I can tell you, I can get that for you exactly, so that you know. Somebody who's faster at math, they could probably figure that out, too.
I mean, that's looking at total. So there's 200, you know, 2,700 employees. So 10% would be 270. Right? So 27 is 1%. So that was actually all right.
Yeah. That's a 10%, but it does give you the growth, the growth. Yeah.
And then a second question that I have, and I'm looking at the top three reasons for terminations. And when I look at teachers going to another district, what is, what is pulling them to other districts? Are we talking to the ones that are leaving and saying, why are you leaving our district to go to another district? Is there an exit interview that is happening?
There is an exit interview that they're able to fill out. And what we're finding is we're not getting as rich of information as we would like on those. And so this is the, these are the areas that we're going to focus on this year. That one in particular, because if they're leaving for other districts, we'd really like to understand what it is that they're leaving for, so that we can get into the, the culture piece of that as well, as well as any maybe benefits, or direct things that they may be leaving for. So we don't really have that data today, as far as why they left other districts, but it is on our plan to address for next year, or this year.
And what are some of the ways that we would get richer, richer data through those exit interviews, or other means?
Yeah. I think we're going to have to actually reach out and have conversations with folks. So today, we rely on them completing an exit survey. And it, for whatever reason, they just don't always do that. So I think we may get better information and more information if we actually have conversations with them. So it's a resource where we're going to have to dedicate time and energy to making those phone calls.
Director Keller?
I have a few questions about the induction program, if you wouldn't mind. Just to, to get a, a little better understanding of how that works. The induction program is for teachers who are new to the district. Is that correct?
New to the profession, first and second year teachers.
Okay. So someone at Grant Wood is mentoring them or supporting them in some way?
Correct.
Do they, do these, do the, does the staff have additional support within the building? Is there like a job-alike person that's mentoring them, or someone in the same subject area?
Yeah. So they all would meet with their professional learning communities. So that's a collaborative team that works together. So that person becomes like a professional partner, or that team becomes a professional partner for the day-to-day stuff, as well as their instructional coach in the building, and their principal. So we do kind of a wraparound services for that teacher. A lot of the times, the principal, the coach, and the induction coach sit down, too, and divvy out, what area are we going to focus on as a principal? What do you, we want you to focus on as an instructional coach, as an induction coach, not to overwhelm, and also not to have too many people saying the same thing, but the person hearing it differently. And so then they don't know what to do. So like, you're going to focus on SEBH, induction coach, and instructional coach is going to focus on math routines. So it's one person providing the information.
Okay. How long are they provided that support? Is that one year, two years?
Three years.
Two years. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Director Newman?
I'm not looking for any type of exact math here, or anything like that, I promise. But at the New Teacher Breakfast, Deputy Superintendent Quaker did kind of a cool exercise where, and I don't remember the exact question, but she said, you know, if you were, if you were a teacher before this, but this is your first job in the district, you know, stand up. And that was a pretty big number. Are you finding that they're just kind of circling around the districts? Is it coming mostly from the area, and we're pulling as many from other districts? Or are they coming from way outside the area?
Yeah. So I would say this is a bit of speculation on my part. I think after the COVID and the pandemic, a lot of people took assessment of where they're at in their life. And many of them are making decisions based off of what they want or need in their, in their own lives. And so that's caused a lot of people, I mean, mass exits, the great resignation. We're not alone in that, that people are going and trying different things now. And so part of that could be, I need a new environment, or I want to try a new environment. When I did my focus group with the new teachers and asked them why they selected Cedar Rapids, got some great positive feedback in the sense of, they're really looking for the work that we're doing around diversity, equity, inclusion, as well as some of our innovative programs and our magnet schools. So those are the things that are drawing them to our district. So some of them is, is a step away from the small schools into a larger school. And so it's kind of a variety of different things. But I would say a lot of it is personal choice at this point. Good question.
Any other questions? Director Branshwa?
I was wondering about the age profile, you know, looking at the number of retirements, it's not increasing by a lot over time, but slowly and steadily. I know if you kind of look at society as a whole, we're kind of in the middle or end of the baby boom generation retiring. Is that true of our workforce? Is the number of retirements going to all hold steady, keep increasing, go down?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to really dig into some of that information as to whether or not we're seeing any changes with the, the demographics from an age perspective. We're really fortunate in, in this particular sector that, and people can retire early. So a lot of them can retire at 55 and go do something different. And so you definitely will see a larger number of retirements in education, most likely would be my guess.
Another question, just, I guess, when we're looking at diversifying the workforce, how do we, what can we do? What partnerships we can do? I don't know, Kirkwood, there's lots of universities in the area. Because we're graduating, you know, how many kids graduate from Cedar Rapids each year? A thousand. And our student population is, you know, approaching 30% non-white at this time. How do those kids, or kids in surrounding districts, or just in the region at all, end up going into the education field? How do we kind of make that happen more? I know it probably happens to some degree naturally. How do we make education an attractive thing that more kids from all backgrounds are getting into, and then coming in, working for us?
Sure. I love that question. Thank you for asking that. I'm going to actually turn it over to Haley to answer that question, because I think this is an area of highlight for us and celebration for us, because we're doing some really innovative and creative things. And to give her a moment to shine a little bit. So Haley, would you come up?
Hi, I'm Haley Resware. I'm an HR specialist here. So some of the work that we're doing is, we currently have a Grow Your Own program through the University of Dubuque, the Life Program. So that's really enticing people to start maybe as a para here at the district, or a support staff. Any position the district is eligible for that program. And then they can go to the Life Program through the University of Dubuque. Everything's online or at night. And it's a very accelerated program that will take them about two years, a little bit more to complete. We do offer tuition reimbursement right now. So that's really also enticing people to go. We have a little over 20 staff in the program currently. Plus, we also got an apprenticeship grant through the state of Iowa. And we have an additional seven people in that program. And that's all through the University of Dubuque as well. It's just, it's funded through the grant.
Other questions from the board? Maybe dig in a little bit more on partnerships, and Diablo Track, I think you had mentioned is proactive recruiting. So kind of curious, how many internal, like in HR, how many people are focused on recruitment as, as the main, main job?
So Haley and David both do recruiting as part of their role. And so we're trying to get to where that's about 60% of their job. I would say today, it's about 40%. And it does peak, obviously, during our hiring season. But there's a lot more time spent on recruiting than there was four years ago. And just really trying to identify and find those candidates. David could speak a little bit, you want to come up a little bit? David could speak a little bit about some of the things that he's doing every day, just to go find candidates for us, and some of the creative stuff that we've started doing in that area.
So I'm David, HR specialist. Celebrated my one-month anniversary last week. So I've been doing some exciting things, though, when it comes to recruiting. So looking at, a couple of months ago, our applicants for transportation, custodial, food service in paras have doubled, just by really focusing, drawing down on our job postings, and gaining some more ownership over like our Indeed posts, being able to follow up with candidates as they go to our website. So you look, it doesn't apply, and follow up with them. And just having a greater understanding of when our applicants are just looking versus when they're applying. So we've seen a lot of traction with that micromanagement. And that's primarily what I'm focusing on right now. So it's been a lot of exciting data that we've seen from it, of a lot of exciting traction as well.
Great. Thanks for the update.
David has a dashboard that has these little dots, and it shows you the applicants, right? And so he's obsessed with it. So every day, he's looking for that dot to get bigger. And like he said, he's doubled the applications for many of our groups in just the last month, just by continuously focusing on that.
Great. Appreciate that. As a former recruiter, I can...
So the idea of teachers coming into the profession, new teachers, and making it an attractive position or profession for us, is something that we really need to start thinking about and considering, in the sense that we know that, you had referenced the baby boomers retiring. We know that the people leaving the workforce and our recruitment coming in is less. Our college of education out there don't have, have as many people in the teaching profession track. So that is something that we really need to advocate for. And how can we do that? It also starts with partnerships within the colleges and universities, and getting in there at the very foundational level of those, of that coursework. So we start those relationships with those people while they're early on in their college education. And then they just keep coming back. And it's through teaching classes, it's through going and doing, you know, mock interviews, or it's through going in and saying, hey, you can come be a cooperating teacher, or a student teacher, and following up with that. But we will see a decrease, because not as many people are going into the profession for a lot of different reasons. But especially now, teachers are sometimes their own worst enemies. And if you have a kid and you're a teacher, you would ask that kid to go be a doctor, or an engineer. How many say, go be a teacher? Because they, teachers understand the stress of that work. So that's just, I just wanted to touch on that, because that, that is going to be a significant role in this, because there's many people coming into the profession that are leaving.
Director Branshwa?
Picture, look at this all. Is it, to some degree, you know, we talked about hiring a lot more paras in the last year after we raised the wage. Is money a leading cause of why it's so hard to attract people? I mean, I know a lot of teachers, you know, I know it's a stressful position, you know, if you doubled their pay, they'd probably still be stressed, but maybe a little bit less so, and think twice about leaving the profession. And so to some degree, does that fall on us as a district leadership, kind of advocating more? You know, if the state of Iowa decided to give us twice as much state money next year, I imagine some of these problems would be a lot easier to solve. And so is the big picture, really, is there enough money when the teacher tells their kid, go be a doctor, or an engineer, or whatever? Are they saying, oh, you're going to get paid more and be less stressed? Is that kind of the heart of it all, I guess?
Yeah, I think salary and compensation is always a basic need for all employees. Although I think it's much broader than that. And so I, we definitely have some work that we're going to be doing with the association this year around... this year around some of the salary. For instance, we know where, where we do a really, uh, for teachers in particular, our hiring, uh, right out of school is very generous and so is at the end of their career. The mid-career is an area that we need to do, um, take a look at. And so we definitely know that there's always opportunities for us to look at from a salary perspective. But I really think the broader picture is what Ryan's hitting on, which is we don't have as many people going into the teaching profession. And I think we have to take a step back and figure out, why is that? Like, why will people not go into teaching? And I know we're not going to solve all that because it's not controllable here at this district, but I do think, one of the things I say all the time, and I'll try not to get on my soapbox, but we have to talk about the positive side of education as well. And there are many, many educators that do this work and love this work and are passionate about this work. And we have to get those stories out there too and help people see that this is a real profession and that they can be rewarded and they can love the work that they're doing. It's just so hard because there's so much negativity around the whole education profession right now. And, um, I'd like to be part of that spearhead that helps to change some of that.
I'm just going to add on, it's really about feeling appreciated. There's just not enough of that. And there are things that again, out of our control, but there are things within our control and it, you know, money is nice, but there are other ways to also show appreciation and also just validate what we say and what we do. And, you know, and having us at the table is one of those important things. So when big decisions are being made, we like to be a part of it and not be informed afterwards and then expect to live with it. Those kinds of things are very degrading and can be very, um, can be very hurtful to our work staff. One of the things we also want to talk about is being more innovative about how do we keep people in the profession? I'm someone who can, who can also retire in just a couple of years. You know, what, what incentive is there for me to stay? I mean, these are the kinds of conversations we need to have and things we need to be talking about because it isn't just the baby boomers, it's also Gen X. We're, we're right at the borderline too and being able to retire.
Can I assume that we're getting a lot of that data through the onboarding process, right? Like the reason why people are still choosing the profession because though it's in decline, I think to celebrate the reason why folks choose education, continue to choose it. Um, and then I do think going back to that richer data on both sides, right? Why are, why are folks coming in and then why are they leaving maybe quicker than they used to? And I think the, the deeper we can get on that, I'd, I'd love to see that in the next update when we come back.
Teaching and love being with kids and want to see kids succeed. That's the most rewarding thing. You could pay them all the world, all the money in the world, or you could not pay them up because they love kids. And I truly believe that all of our teachers love the kids in front of them. And so compensation is and benefits isn't a value of appreciation, but I know deep down, all these teachers just want to teach kids. They want to see kids learn, they want to see kids achieve, but then it's the extra peripheral stuff of, that is weighing and the amount of work that it takes to plan and prepare as well as just kind of the societal, um, stuff on the outside that they have, that they take in and, you know, that, that weighs on people. But if it was just their kids in front of them and working for those kids, they would do anything for those students. I truly believe that. And how do we highlight that? That's the most reporting, uh, rewarding part of their job. It's the other stuff that...
Great. Any other? Director Humbles.
As you developed the resolution team, I believe you said there's four right now for Reese. So are you thinking about who else will be included? Because I think it's nice, you're both sitting at the table and doing some problem solving and you're, you're working together. And I think that's so important, but I know right now you said there are four that are working through this product. The training and then when will others be invited or will you be adding more folks?
We can't do the work alone. The four of us have to be the, the core.
Okay.
And what our decisions that we have to start talking about tomorrow is, is to talk about what other voices aren't at the table.
Okay.
What's manageable? Because if you look at our TA, our TA is longer than what we can get done and have and be ready to address by time it's time to sit down at the bargaining table with our full contract being open, not just wages. And so just even trying to get through contractual language, we can't do this of four of us. And so we're looking at the structure provided in our training materials, looking at creating subcommittees. And so again, bringing those folks in, providing that basic training, the decision-making and all the other pieces that we do so that we can, um, again, split the work out and have others doing the work and then coming back. So the team should actually be very fluid. And so depending on your level of expertise and your willingness to volunteer, because I've been stressing about serving to lots of people. But, you know, and your ability to be a part of that helps the work get done. There's no way if we tried to tackle the, the TA, just as I was sharing, we did the brainstorm, we had added to the brainstorm more than what the TA had already uncovered because as we continue to go through this school year, there are more, more things that come to the surface. And so our work will be better served when both folks from labor and management are able to come together, make the time and have the time to go through the materials, go through the, the problem or the task at hand and come back with solutions so that we can again, move forward. I say the language because the contractual language is something that we've talked about for a while, but being able to have the dedicated time and energy to get it done on top of everything else that we're doing, we're asking a lot of, of people and we ask a lot of teachers. So it's, again, it all comes full, full circle. People want to see us do this work and we have to do it thoughtfully, systematically. And the fact that we just got it started is a good point. I just wanted to keep going and that it is a priority because what we don't want to have is meet at the bargaining table and we didn't get much accomplished.
Right. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I just want to clarify if I could, just for the audience, uh, TA is a tentative agreement. It's the agreement, it's the agreement that we, uh, we create when we come out of bargaining.
So thank you for either reading my mind or lips.
Good. Any other questions? Well, thank everybody for the presentation. Appreciate the updates. The final item on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the superintendent's resignation. Superintendent Bush, I believe you have a few words.
Thank you, President Tominski. Well, certainly, uh, this is an emotional agenda item for me. I did greatly appreciate opportunity to speak with the board about this, a very tough decision. So I think I'll lead with, and I think you all know, I absolutely love our district. I absolutely love, um, serving as a superintendent. And so it does come with, um, a heavy heart to ask for the acceptance of my resignation. Given my recent health journey and, well, not recent, it's been a two and a half plus year journey, um, and, uh, taking leave recently, had opportunity for a deep reflection and given, um, uh, the pathways forward, my greatest hope is that I have an unbelievable miracle land in my lap and on G30th of this year, I am able to exit as superintendent and still serve Cedar Rapids Community School District, perhaps back in the classroom, which would absolutely fill my heart with joy, uh, as an English teacher. I've also been a principal and so perhaps doing work at the building level. But what this does is give me opportunity to zoom in and really focus on my health and my family. I have such gratitude for the support that the board has not only given me now, right here in this moment, but also all of the support that you have given me. Just since the moment I said yes to, uh, fill this role as the superintendent. The administrative team has been tremendous in supporting me. Um, I'm grateful that I've been able to work in hybrid ways like I am tonight and be, um, still present, uh, in my job as much as possible. But when I am not able to be physically present and, uh, my duties need to be supported, um, there are so many that have been able to support that work. So shout out and tremendous thank you to this leadership team, all the way through, uh, our organization of principals helping me, uh, with favors as well. So thank you to everybody for that. But, um, it is with a sadness that I ask for the acceptance of this resignation, um, so that I can focus on my health and my family. And, uh, with the hopes that perhaps I can return to Cedar Rapids School District, uh, in, uh, in July, uh, in a different role. But it does fill my heart with joy knowing I will continue to serve in this role for the duration of this school year. So thank you.
This board has a tremendous amount of respect for you, Superintendent Bush, and just appreciate your continued leadership for all of us. You've, you've put so many other people first and I appreciate you, uh, taking this time, uh, knowing that this is the right time to take for your, for your health, but knowing that you'll stay on, uh, through the school year. I shared this with you when you told me about your interest in going back in the classroom. I think I can't be alone when I tell you that I would love to go back into a classroom led by you or a school led by you. It just seems like the greatest joy, um, that I think I could have. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
We love you and we appreciate you and we, that you know that we very much strongly support you and we are here. We are here.
I, I do have a comment.
I can still hear Justin.
Oh. Well, that, that's good. That kind of, woo, reset a little bit. So, and I've, I've said this, um, often because I, I get feedback often in the community about what a tremendous leader you are. And hiring you is one of the best things I've ever done professionally. And I very much appreciate the service you've, um, given this district, truly leading with a servant's heart. So I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
Director Humbles.
I would like to say to you, Noreen, I am so happy when I made the call to you to serve as our superintendent and the outstanding job you have done that has made us stronger as a board. And we believe in your passion and your hope and that, that we, we all love you. And as you know, we pray for you too. So I love you and if you need us for anything, please call us.
Director Garland.
Noreen, I've always felt like we started this journey together. When the first thing that we did as a board, as a new board, when the four of us were elected was to hire you. And you have shown infinite patience and leadership for all of the new board members. We, I think, have grown together into this job. I think we all love this district. I can't tell you how proud I am to know you and know the people in this community that respect you and look up to you. We are so much in your gratitude for everything you've done for us personally and for, and for this district. So thank you. You will always be in our hearts. So, thank you.
Director Rangine.
I want to thank you for your strength and your tenacity. You make no excuses. Any excuse that I've ever wanted to make, you give me a reason to just put that away and show up anyway. So thank you for your strength, your tenacity, your stick-to-itiveness. Those are words that describe you. Thank you for making it, uh, a joyous thing when I joined the board. It was, you know, just unknown territory, but you welcomed me and thank you so much. Thank you for all of our conversations and just being a, a great example of a professional as a woman, um, and, and your passion for this district and everybody that is here, staff on every level. I've seen you treat everybody with love and respect and thank you.
Director Newman.
Hi, Noreen. This is a hard, um, this is a hard meeting, I know for you. It's a hard meeting for us too, but just know that we do accept that resignation with heavy hearts, but also just being joyous in what you've taught us as our leader. And, um, I will never forget you doing the Jefferson Fight Song. The whole thing, um, I think the day after he had chemo too. So I was just like, so the next day when I didn't want to work out, I was like, but Noreen. So thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So next we'll vote, um, if accepted, um, we'll establish a process which will include a national search for, for a superintendent, um, beginning in July 1st. Now this is a roll call vote. Laurel.
Director Newman. Do you want to be first?
Aye.
Director Porchton.
Aye.
Director Garland.
Aye.
Director Marshprack.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Aye. As we adjourn our meeting this evening, we'd like to close in a moment of silence to recognize one of our staff members. I'll turn the meeting over to Joy Long, who is the principal at Garfield Elementary School.
Good evening. For more than 30 years, Barb Hart was the president at Garfield Elementary. That was hard to follow, you guys, come on. She first started as a parent and PTA member, giving many hours of her time as her children attended Garfield. In 1993, Barb began working at Garfield as the enrichment volunteer coordinator and later as a paraprofessional. She continued as an active member of the PTA for all of those years. Barb's dedication and love for Garfield were unmatched. She had a passion for all things Garfield and it isn't the same without her presence. As volunteer coordinator, Barb made sure that every volunteer felt valued and appreciated. A meeting space complete with a table and coffee maker welcomed our many volunteers. Barb wanted to make sure that they could meet and share coffee and camaraderie while they worked, and so it became as much a social event as volunteerism. But it was this sense of belonging that kept many dedicated volunteers coming back year after year. I'm guessing if we compared volunteer hours by building, Garfield would be near the top year after year, despite our small size. Barb was proud of her work in promoting volunteerism and she was amazing in that role. Barb was an active member of our social committee and loved setting up our monthly potlucks. She had the appropriate decorations and themes for every event and proudly displayed them and then stored them away for the next time they were needed. Barb had a knack for finding unique decorations and themed ideas and shared them with pride. Barb's unexpected passing has left Garfield with a huge void, one that we are finding one person cannot replace. We find ourselves saying often, that was something Barb took care of. Who's going to do that now? One of those things was America Reads Day, which is coming up in October. Barb would roll out the welcome wagon for our many readers on that day. She'd decorate the foyer in red, white and blue and have small tokens to show appreciation to our volunteer readers. We will celebrate America Reads Day, but it won't be the same without Barb. This will be true of many events that she made special for us. Barbara Ann Hart was born on April 16th, 1960 in Benton, Iowa. She graduated from Center Point Urbana High School in 1978. She was lovingly married to her husband, Tom, and was the proud mother of Megan, Molly and Rob, and an even prouder grandmother of Stella, Theo, Sophia, Landon and Scarlett. Barb passed away unexpectedly September 1st while recovering from surgery at the University of Iowa hospitals. Barb didn't care for funerals, so a celebration of life funeral is planned for August 25th, 2023, with all of her favorite things, family, friends, a campfire, smores and glow bracelets and some dance party music. Barb's years of service and contributions to the Garfield community and the Cedar Rapids Community School District are commendable and appreciated beyond measure. In Barb's honor, we have started the Hart Award. This award goes to the student in each classroom each week who has shown exemplary kindness towards others. Barb lives on at Garfield in this award and we are proud to honor her in this way.
Please join all of us in a moment of silence. With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.